We'll go and get started. Welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District, number thirteen, school board meeting for Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. I'd like to call the meeting into order and ask if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Laura, if you would, please roll call.
Mueller?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Samurai?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
And Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
Thank you, Laura. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda announcements and correspondence. Start with approval of the agenda. If we could move that forward, please.
So moved.
Laura, thank you.
Second.
Holla, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstain, that motion carries. Announcements, December twenty-third, so Monday, be a district in service, there'll be no school. December twenty-fourth through January first is winter break, no school. January seventh at five-thirty, the school board organizational meeting will be held here in the community room. Also on January seventh at six o'clock would be the school board work session. January fourteenth, seven PM, regular school board meeting. January twenty-first at five-thirty, school board work session. January twenty-eighth at five PM, school board subcommittee on policy. And also on January twenty-eighth, regular school board meeting here in the community room. Next up, correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mister Chair and members, there's no correspondence this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next up would be communication to the board. Anybody here to speak tonight? Okay, move forward from that. The consent agenda, which includes the personnel report and minutes of the November twelfth and twenty-sixth school board meetings, and also the November nineteenth school board work session, and then the treasures report for August and September of two thousand and nineteen. Motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Lorien?
Second.
Natty? Discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Next up would be acknowledgement of contributions. Ask for a motion in a second, and then I'll read it, and I'll put it up for discussion. So start with the motion, please.
So moved.
Holla?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Acknowledgements of contribution resolution. Whereas Minnesota Statute one-two-three-B point zero-two permits school boards to receive for the benefits of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District, number thirteen, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of, oh, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty cents. Oh, okay. Detailed background, that's why I paused when I was reading it. I kind of jumped down and read the number. Then I did quick math there, but. The detailed background, under monetary donation of a hundred dollars was made to Highland Elementary Library Fund by Robert and Sally Willis for library books and technology. A donation of five hundred dollars was made to Highland Elementary Library Fund by Mark Mahaffery for library books and technology. A donation of a hundred dollars was made to Valley View Elementary by Carmen Doji for lunches for students in need. A donation of four hundred dollars was made to the Columbia Heights High School Anchor Program by Bell Bank in honor of Gene Rosengren for program needs. Value and Kind, donation of six licenses to Discovery Educational with Professional Development Support was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by United Healthcare for staff support, estimated value of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Donation of uniform shirts was made to Valley View Elementary by Embroidery and More for student needs, estimated value of one thousand and thirty dollars. Donation of mittens was made to Valley View Elementary by Saint Phillips Lutheran Church for student needs, estimated value a hundred and sixty dollars. And the following donation was made to Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Fund by George Holt for fifteen hundred dollars. Total fiscal twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Open it up.
Chair?
Yeah?
There's a carrier. I transferred the others.
Okay, so the amount of donations, okay, so going back to be it resolved, Independent School District, number thirteen, that the board accepts with appreciation, contributions detailed in the background in the amount of one hundred and forty-two, seven ninety, okay? And total fiscal twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, monetary contributions to date, one hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty cents. Comments, discussion?
Super generous, thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Hearing no further discussion, this is a resolution, so Laura, if you would please roll call to approve.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, very generous. Reports from members of the board. Board members report on activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Laura, would you mind going first tonight?
Uh, yes, I'll try, I'll try to be brief. I attended the monthly nine sixteen board meeting, and then I also attended the MSBA delegate assembly that was held, I think it was last weekend or the weekend before. A lot of things having to do with changes in law and a couple of tweaks to policy that were unintended consequences, that we're going to try to pursue and get those things fixed. But one of the most interesting things was a resolution that was brought by the Austin Public School, School Board with the substitute teacher shortage that's, that's being affected, I mean, it's across the state, that what they wanted to do is they wanted to develop a pilot program for being able to certify substitute teachers for being able to teach in their schools. So they're just asking for permit, they want, and ask for permission to be able to develop this program. So I thought that was very interesting and a good innovative way. That the other resolution that was pretty much unanimous was also hoping to have the mental health grants being more of a permanent type of a basis, as well as the safety grants. Because a lot of schools weren't able to participate in that, or only one out of several locations, you know, even though multiple locations were applied for. So those are probably the high points. And I'll cut it brief, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Holla?
Um, I attended the school board, city council joint meeting at the library and had a number of conversations with community members.
Okay, thank you. Lorien, would you mind going next?
No, that's fine. I also attended the city council, school board joint meeting, and also had several conversations with community members.
Okay, thank you. Natty?
Sorry, for your entertainment, I will speak. I was able to attend a couple swim meets, which has been fun to get the swimming off to a good start for the boys team now. I was also at the joint meeting with the city, and it was nice to create some groundwork of relationships with the city. I know we've had a nice working relationship, but just for the board and the council to sit down face to face was, I think, a really good thing. I went to the chair meeting right before this meeting, and I also went to AMSDU Superintendent Kelly on Friday, and it was interesting topics. They had two legislators there, two legislators there who talk, answer questions essentially from administrators and school board members around the metro, and it was interesting to hear their answers, and they also are shoring up their legislative platform for twenty twenty, and it ranged from things that you would expect, like the cross subsidy to others, maybe smaller things like, should we use the ACT as the MCA for juniors in high school, different things like that. And so, ranging from cost savings to maybe bureaucracy savings for the, for the districts, so, interesting.
Okay, thank you. Molly?
Thank you. Over the last couple weeks, I've attended some boys and girls varsity basketball. Both teams are off to a great start, a lot of hard work going on, and also some middle school girls basketball. And I do apologize, I was unable to attend the joint city meeting due to a prior obligation, so, thank you.
I also attended the joint meeting. I thought it was, in all, a productive meeting. I did go to the holiday train, as cold as it was last week. But it was a decent crowd, and as always, it was a lot of fun. And I attended the chair meeting prior to this meeting here. And that concludes my report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have the report? Excuse me.
I do. Chair Larkin, members of the board. I had coffee and conversation with the City of Columbia Heights' new fire chief, Charlie Thompson, it was great. I attended the joint city council, school board meeting. I attended the monthly licensed labor management committee meeting, and as we look at that, Member Palmer, our hot topic was reserve teachers, particularly when we are approaching the flu season coming up. So the district is going to, we've posted for a secondary and an elementary permanent sub to see if we can find one or two individuals that would be willing to be just a generalist that could be assigned to any building at any time. So that was, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was our biggest topic there. And if we did that, they would start at the beginning of second semester. So I, I had, I chaired the Tri-Metro Budget Subcommittee. Like any organization, we're preparing assumptions for the budget for next year, for that, for the conference, and so we've made some recommendations that will be discussed in January. So we hosted with Brooklyn Center, who was the past, and we're the present in Columbia Heights, and then De La Salle is the future of how that committee process rotates on budget, so they were all here. And then, as I already mentioned, I attended the AMSD board meeting, and then I checked in on the North Suburban Post Secondary Success Consortium subcommittees, which were across the hall afterwards. I attended the school board chair meeting, and I've had multiple interactions with you on various topics throughout the past weeks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up would be item C, the Minnesota Student Survey. Tara and Desa.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. I'm here with our research and assessment coordinator, Desa Fabek, to share the results of the Minnesota Student Survey for Columbia Heights Public Schools. Our mission of all belong, all succeed, and really focusing in on the core values of integrity, respect, and courage as we look at the survey results. This will be an informational item, so no governance question will follow. The Minnesota Student Survey provides us data around health, safety, and academic success of our students. It really gives us a current reality of what our students are facing, what they're doing, how they're feeling, and it's used by school districts in many different ways, and we'll share with you how we use it in Columbia Heights. The survey is given every three years and has been since nineteen eighty-nine, and it's given in grades five, eight, nine, and eleven, and it is anonymous. So in Columbia Heights, we use the survey to inform curriculum, to look at the different areas that the students are saying that they want more information on. We use it to guide the work of our staff, including our health teachers, our physical education teachers, our student support team, including social workers. We also use it to inform professional development as we look at the different results that they share. There are many different survey categories, and within each category, there are multiple questions asked on it, and the categories include questions around demographics, school plans, looking at that post-secondary planning, mental health, behavior, substance use, so many different categories, and we'll share some of those results tonight. We're going to start with Desa, she shares the results for Columbia Heights.
Yes. Good afternoon, or good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, and Superintendent Kelly. As you can see from last year, we had a good majority of our students opt to take the Minnesota Student Survey. We're going to go through a few of the questions asked, that is quite numerous in the survey question, so we highlighted a few of the ones that we found particularly important, looking at college. So post-secondary options, you can see closer to graduation, the focus is more intensely on that with our students, which is what we want. And then thinking about an adult in the community or in the school that's supporting their college aspirations, we see that again increase closer to graduation in eleventh grade. All of our students, you can see, really care about doing well in school, and this is representative of multiple questions, and we saw it time and time again. And then the adults that they found in their school that care about students, again, our students are reporting in anonymous, you know, nobody is checking in on them, so they're reporting very high feelings of having an adult that cares about them. Safety at school, of course, is a number one priority, and we're seeing this among all of our fifth, eighth, ninth, and eleventh students. We also wanted to look at cyberbullying, that's been something of importance to us as well, and in the last thirty days, very few of them reported any incidences, so we see this as a, a good movement. Students who have self-reported, participating in a school-sponsored activity or club during the school week, we know with our ONCORE numbers, it looks a little bit different. So again, these students are self-reporting, so they may not identify ONCORE with an after-school activity in their head, that might just be an extension of the school day. So we see it a little bit lower than we actually have represented. We also wanted to look at physical activity. We see it's pretty consistent throughout the grades represented. For health, sleep, sleep seems to decrease as they get older, even though the need is still significant. Many factors for that. Mental health, something that we focus on is really being able for students to express themselves in a positive way, and we see this statewide as well, that students are saying they need a little bit more support with this. Our Columbia Heights Public School students indicated that they accept people who are different than themselves almost always or often, we saw that in very high percentages. And then we also wanted to look at substance abuse, so alcoholic drinks in the last twelve months, lower than the state. So to summarize, we had, again, there was multiple categories, but to pull out some really big things is our students are really indicating that they care about doing well in school, they feel like there is a focus on college after graduation or career readiness. We have a lot of students that have indicated that they have a caring adult in the school, and then that participation in outside of school events.
We also have the majority of our students feeling safe at school, which was a big priority for all of us. And as mentioned, the amount of sleep decreasing, so really encouraging in our health classes, the importance of sleep and academics. Exercise varied, but is below health recommendations, and with the new physical education standards, that is a focus that we're working on with our teachers, is to ensure we're talking about health outside, outside of school, what they can do in terms of lifelong health. And then really, the acceptance of people that are different than oneself was very high among our students, which is great to see. So, any questions?
I have a question.
Yeah?
And it may be just that I'm not understanding. So the survey is given every three years, right? So we gave it in two thousand and nineteen, so we won't give it for two more years. So in theory, the students who took it in fifth grade will take it again in eighth grade, and will take it again in eleventh grade?
Yes.
And have you done any analysis of the research, kind of following that cohort group through the years to see how their results have changed?
This was the first year that we had a cohort to follow, and so Dr. Michael Rodriguez out of the U of M has done a little bit of research around that, and Tara and I were able to see some of his presentations, so we can't do it student by student, because it is anonymous, but looking at the cohort, we did get some valuable information.
And one thing he really shared was that social emotional. From fifth grade, it went down to, in eighth grade, and down even more in eleventh. So around the state, that was a focus that they're really going to be pushing with districts.
Thank you. That's social emotional health, or?
So the answers that they gave are on mental health, yes.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up would be the pre-AP, I believe, the pilot.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We're back again. We're going to, we are here tonight for an informational item around pre-advanced placement, pre-AP, the pilot that we started this school year, just giving you an update as we look at this school year and moving into next school year. I'm here with Desa Fabek, our research and assessment coordinator, really focusing in on our mission of all belong, all succeed, as we look at pre-AP, and the core values of excellence and innovation. This is an informational update, so no governance question will follow. Just a reminder about the pilot, we shared this last year and the year before as we were thinking about it, that College Board really looked at pre-AP across the country, and schools were using pre-AP in different ways and what it meant. So College Board took the pre-AP name back and really said, pre-AP is coming through the College Board, and here's what it is. And pre-AP is a pilot through College Board this school year, and we were fortunate enough to be part of that pilot, because it really has made a huge impact in our school, and Desa's going to share a little about that, as we've been discussing with students and teachers. But pre-AP is an opportunity for our ninth grade students to have high rigor in classrooms and to really prepare for those college classes, as well as the AP classes that we have in the high school. This year for pre-AP, we have a large pilot. We have English, math, social studies, dance, visual arts, music, and theater. So the second semester theater will be starting with pre-AP, so we'll be following up with that as well. And the pre-AP pilot really is open access, so it's a little different than AP. We have open access in our school district for AP, which is not common in other, in other school districts, it's very uncommon, so we're fortunate to have that, but really giving them that opportunity in ninth grade to start preparing for those classes. It also helps them prepare for other opportunities, especially around early college or other higher rigor classes like that. The cost for the pilot is up there, and currently there is no cost to pilot our art classes. So as we look at pre-AP for this year, Desa's going to share how we've been checking in with it, and what it's going to look like for next year.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We've been meeting with our pre-AP team of teachers regularly, getting feedback from them, seeing what's working well, what questions they had. In October, we had a site visit from some College Board staff from the pre-AP program, and they did focus groups with students and staff, and we got some really valuable feedback. We were hearing our students say, without any prompting, I can do harder things than I realize. I feel like I'm making connections in multiple classes, it's not isolated to just my math class, I'm applying that to my other courses. So things that were really powerful that stuck out to us, and the College Board representatives. Our staff are saying the same thing, that they're modeling some of these pillars from the pre-AP of rigor and circling back to information in their other classes, so we see a really positive outflow from this pilot thus far. We've taken the PSAT this fall, and we'll take it again in the spring, that is part of the pilot, so all of our ninth graders enrolled in a course, the pre-AP course. We'll see some growth from that, and then that feedback has been so valuable from both staff and students. And then there are some components of the pilot, such as assessments that have been pre-made, some quizzes from the College Board, just to check in to see how are our students doing, how are they growing, what areas of growth do they still need support in, and then of course, the performance tasks. For next year, we're going to continue the same ninth grade pilot courses, which is English, math, social studies, dance, visual arts, music, and theater, and then extend into tenth grade with English II.
And that actually came from our teachers, as well as students. When pre-AP came out, they had a conversation with some of our staff and sharing about what are the next steps, and the staff really encouraged us to look at that English II, which is a tenth grade, to continue to support them as they move up. So it was the excitement from the staff that had us look into it, and then checking in to see with the College Board what that would look like for next year. So we're excited to continue the pilot into next year, as well as expand it in English, and see how then, as they move into eleventh grade, the impact that it has in our AP classes, as well as other classes at the high school.
I have a question. So I understand that you're getting a lot of feedback from the teachers, from the AP and pre-AP teachers, to see what they're thinking of this, this pilot. Are you also getting feedback from the principal? Like, if there have been any complaints from parents about the curriculum in some of the pre-AP classes?
We do, we check in with Principal Robleski quite often. At least once a month, we have check-ins, and he and Assistant Principal Matt Miller also attend some of those pre-AP meetings. So we have had some conversation, we have had taught, had some conversations with parents as well, so we can look into the curriculum and talk to them about it. So we really have had an open conversation happening, and we'll continue to do it throughout the year as well.
Sounds good.
Is there a conversation about expanding the, the math and the social studies to tenth grade as well? I like the idea of you giving it to them strong in ninth grade, but then really your AP classes, the majority are junior, senior years, so there's that gap in there. Is that a conversation that's being had for the additional courses?
Currently, College Board does not offer that second course in many of theirs, so they opened up the second course in English, and they opened up a second course in science, but it does not align with the Minnesota State standards yet, so we didn't look into that one. But I can see as they move forward that they probably will expand more opportunities, and we'll definitely look into that, too.
If I understand correctly, we can't use what we had for our pre-AP stuff previously anymore, correct?
Correct. College Board has said, we're using the College Board curriculum to call it pre-AP. And that curriculum really has a lot of high rigor, and a lot of the pieces, as we think about lifelong skills, as we moved into, move into college, it includes a lot of the discussion questions, a lot of the facilitation between groups, so we've been very impressed with the curriculum that they've had.
So, that being said, what is being done tenth grade year, then?
Yes, yeah, we have two staff members actually working with the tenth grade teachers, as well as the eighth grade teachers this school year, to really inform them on what that curriculum looks like and the framework that they have. We've already started looking at implementing the framework from pre-AP into those classes. So we've started that conversation with them already.
Thank you.
Because I think it has impact on eighth grade, as well as they prepare for ninth grade.
Can you go back to that class list?
Sure.
Can the older kids, like a sophomore, take the arts classes? It's available to?
Yes. Yes, we have some students, yeah. So some of the mixed grades for the art and music and theater and dance, we're seeing multiple grades up as ninth.
But the core classes, those are limited to ninth graders because of the state requirements in those?
Correct, in the format of the curriculum for pre-AP, yep.
Director Tuck, I was wondering if you could talk about, since it is a pilot, the College Board visitations, when they come out, so that the board might be interested in that.
We were fortunate enough to have one visit already, and possibly another one coming up, and they brought three different representatives to come, and what they do during that time is they meet with the administration, they have conversations with them, they meet with the teachers, a group of teachers to check in, they meet with students, so they pull student groups, and they sit with the student groups, and they have questions for them and ask them how it's going. And then they also sit in on all of the classes. So they went to every single classroom and sat in for quite a large amount of time, and asked questions of the students, checked in on the teaching, and we got a lot of feedback from them, including a lot of positive feedback about the teaching from our instructors that we have here, from our teachers. They were very impressed with the relationship they had with students, they were impressed with our students, and the excitement they had for learning. So we got a lot of positive feedbacks, as well as next steps that we can take.
Yeah, so I understand that the pre-AP is, the curriculum and assessments are pretty rigorous, and that's what we want to prepare our students, but has there been any work to overtly examine the alignment of that, those curriculum and assessments with our core values, namely, like, respect for some of our minority groups, and then also to see if there's alignment between our core values, and then how it's being implemented?
Yes, we have done some work around aligning, really ensuring that we see our students in the curriculum, and that our students see themselves, and that they see each other. And the pre-AP curriculum is only half of their actual curriculum, so it's fifty percent of the time. The other fifty percent of the time, we are following the curriculum that we currently have. So it's a combination of the two, so we're working together with that. And as we go through the pilot, we'll continue to do that, we'll continue to check in on the resources they're providing, supplement them as needed, because we really do want to ensure that the resources and the instruction that they're having does relate to them. So we'll continue to do that as we move forward, but we have started that as well, too.
What else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next up would be the district's annual budget hearing, truth and taxation, I believe. Denise? Denise.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. This is the portion of the meeting that we are doing, the Truth and Taxation. So it's for Taxes Payable 2020. Our mission, all belong, all succeed. Our core values of community and integrity are being highlighted in this presentation. So here's the agenda. I'm going to give a background on property tax levies, legislative changes that affect the 2020 levy, information on the school, the school current budget and current funding and the district budget, proposed property tax payable in 2020, estimated impact on the taxpayers, how to get a Minnesota property tax refund, and then time for public comments and questions. Okay. The Truth and Taxation Law, they changed the law in 2009 so that we're allowed to have this public meeting now during a regular board meeting. Before it used to have to, it was a separate meeting. And so we're required to discuss the proposed property tax levy for the taxes, the current year budget, the levy can be adopted at the same meeting and we must allow for public comment and question. So this chart is explaining, showing the levy cycle and it shows the city, township, and county versus the school district. So the levy cycle is pretty similar in both, for both cities and county, city, county and the school district. The only difference is the, the county, the city, county, and township, they're on the calendar year and we're on the fiscal year, so we start July 1st of 2020. So really, we start in January of 2019 with the legislature doing, doing all the things, passing statutes and laws for our levy, and we really don't get the money until a year and a half later in July of 2020. So the Finance Department's usually in three fiscal years, so at one time, so that's all that shows. The levy cycle process, now the next two slides explain the levy cycle and how they, they calculate the taxes. The first six of them are all out of our control. So it's the county that does it and this, then, and this MDE. So at first, the assessor's the one that, that estimates the property value, the county auditor calculates the net tax capacity, and then they, they take all of our, the jurisdictions like the city, the county, and the school district and they apply that to the whole tax capacity of the school, school district and the city. So on number four, the county auditor divides the final levy, levy of our district over the net tax capacity or the referendum market value and the rates are established. And the county auditor applies those rates to each parcel and they prepare the final statement for mailing. The MDE is the one that sets the limits and it's all based on current legislation and formulas. The district really doesn't have anything, we don't have anything to do with the formulas or the legislation other than lobbying, but the School Board adopts a proposed levy in September, which you already did, and you, and then we hold this meeting and finalize the levy amount in December. So the authority for school district, the school district tax levy is either voter-approved or it's set by state law. That's the only way that it can be authorized. So the changes that affect the 2020 levy, the change that only affected it was the 2% increase in the gen ed. And then that portion is reflected in the taxes payable for 2020. So that increase of 2% on the basic formula, it still isn't enough money. It didn't, this is a graph from C, Schools for Equity in Education. And if, if our general ed formula had kept pace with inflation according to the Consumer Price Index, we would have $1,367 more per pupil unit than we have. I'm sure you're all aware of that, so. Information on our school funding and district budget. So our school district funds are, they're broken up into different funds. The general fund is our largest fund and that includes a levy component and also other revenue. So that has our daily operating costs, it's most of our salary and benefits, utilities, it's, most of the costs of the district are in here. There's health and safety, transportation expenditures, LTFM, everything that you've approved before in the budget, that's our largest area. Our second fund is Food Service Fund and that doesn't have any levy component on there. So it's not, has nothing to do with the taxes payable for 2020. The Community Ed Fund does have a levy portion and that's for early childhood levy and there's other levies that are based on the population. So that'll be important this year because we're actually going to have an update in the census for the first time in quite a few years, 10 years, I think. So the other fund that we have, we're, is Debt Service Fund and that is a levy fund and that's all voter-approved. And that's where the bonds that have been voted for in the school district, that's the fund that we use to keep track of the principal and the interest payments on those So this is our fiscal year 1920 budget and this budget was approved back in May of 2019. It's the preliminary budget. We're going to be working next, you know, January, February and revising that budget. So this is what you adopted back in May. And the total revenues are $57,935,414. The expense that we have on our preliminary budget is $58,585,871 and we're showing that we're going to spend $650,457 more than we're bringing in revenue on this preliminary budget. The revenues by fund, this graph is showing what percent the different funds have. As you can see, the general fund is the biggest fund that we have, almost 85%. The next largest is Community Ed at 3.45 in revenue, well, Food Services, 3.6, then Community Ed, 3.45. Building construction, it's 2.25%, Debt Service, 4.99, and Internal Service and OPEB Trust are small funds. The expenditures follow pretty much the same percentages because what we give in the revenue we're going to spend. So the percent for general fund is 85% when you round it up and they all follow in line, The proposed taxes for tax payable in 2020, that's for fiscal year 2021. We had, last year, we certified $9,996,803 and we had a proposed levy that you approved in September and it was for a slightly higher amount, it was a 5.28 increase. And this one now, it went down a tiny bit, so it's 5.04 increase that we're asking for in our taxes. The factors that have caused the property tax changes, they can be voter-approved referendums, changes in enrollment, levy adjustments in prior years, there's legislative changes and there's changes in market value and there's changes in rate history, the class rates and the history of the rates, and those are set by the MDE. So a lot of these, we don't have a lot of influence over. So when we look at, I have a few charts here, I have three charts. It's going to show the impact on the taxpayer and bear in mind, this is only this our portion, it's only the school district portion, it's not the city or the county that's also on the taxpayer's statement. So comparing last year's taxes versus the pay 2020 that we're going to ask you to approve later, they're showing a slight increase in the $100,000 home from $290 to $302. The $150,000 home, basically flat. This is an estimate of the, of the taxes. The $200,000 is 704 and going down to 691. $250,911 going down to 855, 885. A $500,000 home, $1,0919 going down to 1840. Now this is residential property. The next one is non-resident, non-homestead residential property and as you can see in each area, there's a decrease. And again, for commercial and industrial, every category shows a decrease. So maybe that's why we, we don't have very many people at our tax hearing today. The next two slide, the next slide is on Minnesota Property Tax Refund. And there's two different programs. If people want to apply for a property tax refund, there's a Minnesota Property Tax Refund Program called a Circuit Breaker, a Special Property Tax Refund, and you have to complete M1 PR form. So please see your tax professional or call the Minnesota Department of Revenue. And that's it. We are open for any comments or questions.
We'll open it up first, see if there's any video that wants to, comments or questions from the audience and then we'll put it out, because we're going to be talking about it when we do our action items, correct? So at this point, that's all we need to do is allow people to ask questions.
Right.
I'm not seeing anyone in the audience, so we will close the Truth and Taxation Hearing and then we'll move right into our action items, which would be the 2020 levy.
Okay.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah, I was going, well, I was going to have her put it on the table. It's going to be a motion, second and discuss, so.
I wasn't sure.
No, I have, I have a couple too, so we'll have her do your tax levy part and then we'll put it up.
Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. We have before you, I have before you an item for the 2019 Pay 2020 Levy. And each year we certify this levy, we've already done a preliminary in September and this is the final in December that we need to approve so that it can be put on the tax statements.
Start with the motion to move that forward.
I'm moved.
Second.
Raleigh and Maddie? And I'm guessing there's questions. Lori?
I think you should start.
I just, I do have a question, I mean, I think I know what the answer is, but when you look at those numbers, they're all going down.
Yep.
And, but yet, our increase was more than it was the previous year, correct? Is that because of the 2% from the state that?
Yep, it has to do with the 2% from the state, the change in enrollment, and also some adjustments that were from prior years, based on enrollment, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
I think mine is very similar to yours and I, I'm actually surprised that there isn't anybody here and I will say, I guess frankly disappointed, because I have seen a lot of chatter back and forth on social media about the, about the taxes and proposed taxes. And so I just wanted to, just, so that we could clarify, and I think Chair Larkin had mentioned that, you know, there is that roughly 5% increase. And we talked about this previously and can you just talk a little bit more about the adjustments? Because I think that's a, a big piece of, you know, and I think there's some confusion regarding specifically our, the, the levy or the referendum that we had back in 2018 and how that impacts our tax and how that reflected in 2019 payable taxes and then the implication in 2020. Because I know, like personally, my taxes went down last year as well, but I know that there's some, there were some adjustments that were made. So I guess, kind of talk a little bit, one, about how the, the 2018 approval for our buildings, how that impacts the taxes and then the, and then the adjustments too.
The two, the approval of the bonds, that would affect the debt service levy and you can see in the debt service account that it has gone up slightly every year. It was planned, I mean, when you're planning things with Springstead Baker Tilly, they, sorry, they, they structure the bond payments such that the tax impact is minimal, you know, so certain schedules, there'll be more and as they know other debts falling off, so they wrap it around the other debt schedules that we have and, and look at what's falling off. So they try to make the tax impact smooth. So I'm seeing that in the last couple of years, that it's becoming kind of flat. So that's how those were structured by our financial advisor. So I think those are, that's working out pretty well, because I'm not seeing that. What the change is, is there were some big adjustments on our last levies and that's due to pupil unit changes. We have to estimate the pupils for three years out on these levy forms. So there's a lot of data that we put in to the state to calculate this. So some of those adjustments were based on pupil units put in from prior years, prior business managers, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Hearing, no further discussion. For the approving the pay 2020 levy, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Thanks Lori, hard work Denise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to move over one chair.
Move for one chair. Valley View window replacement bid.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Members of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening, I have an action item before you, recommendation approval for Seal, or for the bid for Valley View Elementary Window Replacement. This was presented at a previous school board meeting as an information item. And again, just to reiterate, we opened bids on November 12th. Bids came in very well and actually under what we had expected the project to cost. So we're very happy with where we're at. Carl Sanderson will be working with us managing this project and, because they're already here, so it was very convenient for us. And the low bidder was Val Pro Windows LLC at $531,703. This is a long-term facilities maintenance project and Denise assures me that we have plenty of money to cover that. So, so yes, we, we anticipated this project, it was delayed, so we were ready for it. So again, just a motion to, looking, seeking approval to move forward with that.
Okay, start with the motion and move that forward.
I'm moved.
Lori?
Second.
Laura? Thank you. This question.
I have one question, just, I think we present, you had presented this last time, but we've worked with this company before.
Yes, good question. Carl Sanderson's worked with the company on several projects before and we have actually worked with them before. They actually did the windows on the Valley View addition, the early child incubator addition.
Anybody else? Okay, Hearing, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Next up would be a resolution to combine precincts for special election.
Chair Larkin, Member of the Board, Superintendent Kelly. I was here in November presenting this information item. This would be a resolution, annual resolution to combine polling places in a case of a special election. This would be a cost saving for the district.
Okay, start with the motion in a second if we could and then I'll read the resolution.
I'm moved.
Laura? I got to give it to Laura. Okay. We'll give you, there you go. Lori, yeah. Okay, now I'll read the resolution. Be resolved by School District, School Board of Independent School District 13, State of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are, those precincts are parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or town located in whole or in part with the school district. The Board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, when no other election is being held in a school district, the School Board may designate combined polling places at which the voters in those precincts may vote in a school district election. By December 31st of each year, the School Board must designate by resolution combined polling places. Combined polling places designated in the resolution are polling places for the following calendar year unless a change is made pursuant to Section 204b.172 or because a polling place has become unavailable. If School Board, if the School Board designated combined polling places pursuant to this subdivision polling places must be designated through the district, taking an act, taking into account both geographical distribution and population distribution, a combined polling place must be at a location designated for use as a polling place by a county or municipality. In school district that have organized in separate Board Members' Election Districts under Section 205a.12, a combined polling place for school general election must be arranged though it does not include more than one Board Member Election District. The polling places are going to be Precinct 1, which is Valley View Elementary, 849th Avenue, and they'll cover Clumets, Precinct 1. Avenue, and they'll cover Columbia Heights Precinct One, Precinct Two, Precinct Seven, Precinct Eight, Fridley, they call them wards. Ward One, Precinct Four, Ward Three, Precinct Four, and Hilltop Precinct One. The other polling place would be Highland Elementary at 1549th Avenue. In Columbia Heights, it'd be Precinct Three, Four, Five, and Six. In Fridley, it'd be Ward Two, Precinct Three, and Ward Two, Precinct Four. Pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 205a.09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The clerk is directed to prepare a map illustrating the boundaries of each combined precinct, post the map of the combined precincts in the administrative offices of the school district, and file a copy of the map and a certified copy of this resolution with a county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or part. As required by Minnesota Statutes 204b.16, Subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of new polling place locations to all registered voters in the school district whose school district polling place locations have been changed. The notice must be non-forable, must be a non-forable notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election, to which it will apply. Questions, comments?
I understand that this is a resolution that we need to present every year before the beginning of the following year to allow us to, to have some tremendous cost savings.
Correct.
Can, can you give me an idea of about how much it costs to run an election if we were doing it by ourselves?
Well, I'm not off the top of my head.
Okay. I seem to recall that when we did have special elections, if we would have had to have had 13 polling places.
Correct.
It would have made a tremendous impact on this, on our school budget.
Correct.
So this is something actually that they put forward as something to fix so that we could have one single resolution and only have to reauthorize it if we change locations. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there. This is, we do this every single year, and, and this is only in the event of a special election.
Correct.
Thanks, Laura. Anybody else? Hearing no further comments, this is a resolution, so Laura, if you would, a roll call for the vote.
Yular?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Semray?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up is board policies, would be the second reading. 506 student discipline, 510 school activities, 514 bullying prohibition, policy form only, 515 protection and privacy of public records, 516 student medication, 524 technology and internet acceptable use and safety, 530 immunization and requirements form only, 532 use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds, 802 distribution of obsolete equipment and materials. These policies appeared on the November 26th meeting, they were available for comments. Was there any feedback or comments?
Mr. Chair and members, the superintendent's office received no feedback.
Okay, start with the motion in a second, then open it up.
So moved. Second.
Natty and Molly. Conversations, questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Most needs. Okay, next up would be Superintendent Contract. The board is going to be asked to approve Superintendent Contract. I'll read a letter here quick, not quick, but, "On Tuesday, December 17th, Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education formally accepted the retirement of Superintendent Kathy L. Kelly effective June 30th, 2020. The school board unanimously recognized the years of service, passion, vision, grace, energy, hard work, and commitment that Superintendent Kelly has provided to the district, and deeply thanks her for exemplary leadership and partnership, as well as her ability to attract, develop, and retain high-quality administration employees. Columbia Heights Public Schools is a better place to learn and work due in many ways to Superintendent Kelly's presence, persistence, patience, and capacity to show up every morning and do the good and difficult work that needs to be done on a daily basis. The school board wishes Superintendent Kelly health and life, lived well in her earned retirement, and extends to her an open door and a warm welcome whenever she may be able to visit. The district has benefited from 13 years of qualified and passionate leadership from Superintendent Kelly and administration, who are committed to excellence in management and consultation, and in partnership with the school board committed to excellence and governance. The district has been engaged in planning and improvement in all aspects of academic, extracurricular, operational, cultural, and relational improvement and stabilization." The districts, the district, its students, staff, families, and communities are unique in culture, diversity, history, strengths, and needs. The district needs and will benefit most from leadership with a demonstrated capacity, skills, and compassion with our students, staff, families, and communities. Since September, based on the above information, the school board has assessed options for superintendent transition, and has fully committed to the process of succession versus a process search. The board seeks competent, qualified, and committed leadership that provides for stability, sustainability, and continuation of our approved plans, goals, initiatives, and visions. The school board unanimously has approved the appointment of Xena Stenvik as the superintendent of Columbia Heights Public Schools as of July 1st, 2020, and has approved an agreement for her employment as such. The school board looks forward to many years of partnership with Ms. Stenvik as we strive to provide excellence in governance, management, and consultation in service to our students, families, employees, and community." So we will open up the Superintendent Contract for a motion in a second, if we could, please.
So moved.
Molly? Thank you.
Second.
Natty? Discussion?
I mean, if you start at the top of the letter, I know, I know you don't like fanfare or to be called out or to be singled out for your attention, but just want to reiterate the beginning of that letter, just saying how much we've appreciated all you've done and your hard work for the schools. It'll be 13 years, right?
It will be 20.
Well, you're going to make me blush, because I've been here for 22 years, but 13 years as superintendent, and it's been a wonderful ride.
And it has dawned on me that that has been my son's entire academic, you've been his one and only superintendent, and just appreciating all the opportunities that you've opened up for him and thousands, literally thousands of other kids.
Yeah, I will, again, reiterate, I think all of us could just spend the rest of the evening saying thank you for your service.
Please don't.
We look forward to, to just, you know, continuing through these next several months. There's still a lot going on, so glad that you're, you're here through, through your end date. I think it's important to acknowledge, too, as the board, that, you know, we've had several, and of course, albeit, closed sessions regarding contracts. And for personnel reasons, that's the way that this business is, is handled. But I think, as Chair Larkin mentioned in the letter, you know, we unanimously made the decision, and I think it's something that we all are passionate and felt strongly about, as to what is the appropriate next step for Columbia Heights Public Schools. And looking at what options that we had in terms of search, you know, using an external search group, you know, doing the search ourselves versus succession, you know, really focusing on what is the best next step for Columbia Heights Public Schools. And knowing that we had a candidate here within our district who has a proven track record, and really, I think, is a viable superintendent candidate at any district in the area. You know what you know, and you know who you know. And many companies, organizations, districts look at, how do you promote from within? How do you take the skills and the talents, the abilities that you have already on your team, and use those to your advantage to make things bigger and better and take the next step moving forward? And I think we had a candidate that made sense for us. And again, just reiterating that, it wasn't an easy, you know, conversation. There was lots of things that we had to consider, but at the end of the day, I think, as a board, determined that this was the best decision for the district.
Thank you, Lauren, for taking time to acknowledge all of that. It has been a lot of discussions. And thank you, Superintendent Kelly, for everything you've done for this district.
And you highlight something that's important and things that we've talked about, and to me, anyway, it's important that people understand that this was not a, a decision made on a whim, I guess, as you said, multiple discussions and conversations to look to as what was best. So this isn't something that just came out of the blue. And as a result of contract negotiations and things like that, there's lots of pieces of that that aren't open to public information, so. And the board as a whole, as you said, unanimously decided to hire Xena, fully expecting her to be extremely successful and carry on, carry on the torch, if you will. So, yeah, we wish, I wish you the best, and Xena as well, so.
You've been in the superintendent the entire time I've been on the school board. You've taken the ball and run with just about everything I've asked. And I just, on a whim, something, an offhand comment, I really appreciate the consideration that, that you've put into maybe some of my thoughts and concerns. And I, I really am sorry to see you go, but I'm really excited that you built such an amazing team that we didn't have to look far to find someone that, that will go to the next, the next step and the next level. And I just really appreciate all you've done for, for our kids here.
I want to thank you for that, and it's been a pleasure serving with all of you. Laura really knows all the ups and downs that we've gone through for 13 years. I want to also agree, you know, I'm very vintage, so this is really my 47th year in education. And when I look back, as far as the team I have right now, it is one of the most powerful teams I've ever worked with. And you have been one of the finest boards that I have ever worked with. So kudos to all of you, and thank you for compliments on the team, because they're outstanding.
Vintage. Roll that word down. Any other conversations regarding the superintendent's contract?
Yeah, I just want to say, Kathy, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done, done here. And Xena has big shoes to fill, and she, we expect her to be ready for it, because we continue to have high expectations. And Lauren, thank you for clarifying and explaining to the public all the tedious, painful decisions and thoughts we had to go through to come here. This was not an easy decision, because we really, really want to make the best, best decisions for the students.
Anybody else? Hearing no further conversation regarding the contract, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And rest assured, we've just begun the celebration, so.
Six months.
Board topics, anybody have anything for board topics?
I, yes, I just wanted to, I actually was at the joint city council school board meeting as well, and I really wanted to thank the community for coming out. And it was actually an amazingly good opportunity to actually talk with us. The city council had completely changed over since the last time we had, almost completely changed over since the last time we had had a joint, a joint meeting. So it was great to see all the great plans that the city has. So, and of course, we got to share what was going on in our district and stuff, so I hope we can do that again. And, you know, I just wanted to say thank you again for everybody that came out and the great discussion we had.
Anybody else for board topics?
Yeah, I want to actually, I was looking at the announcements, and December 23rd is an usual workday when you're a teacher and administrator, so I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, and the teachers and the staff who'll be here on the 23rd, kind of taking one for the team so that we can do the work at North Park this summer and get out of here a week early. I think that's a, it talks a lot about the fortitude of our staff and teachers, and it's not easy, probably, and I just want to say, I hear that, and I'm thankful.
Anybody else? I'm going to throw it out there, it's early, but I want you to start mentally preparing for it. The Fire Nice Plunge is January 20th. Don't look at me like that, Anton, you're going to be there, so.
I'll pull you out myself.
It's a, it's a fundraising event, it's held here in Columbia Heights at Silver Lake. Yeah, it's called, I think it's Columbia Heights Fire Nice Plunge, it's January 25th, and proceeds go to SECA, which is our local food, food shelf here in town. So I'll be mentioning it again, but I wanted to get everybody kind of thinking, jumping in that direction, so.
Jumping.
I didn't intend to hear it.
Sorry, that was bad. All right, I'm going to end the meeting on that, too. Anybody else for board topics? Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:05.